All set? Okay, call the meeting order, stamp of the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. So we have a few routine items to approve. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 13th, 2022. Okay, seconded by?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Need to make a motion to accept an order filed the minutes of the committee on special education for 9/6, 9/7, 9/9, 9/12, 9/16, 9/19, and 9/20, 22.
So moved.
So moved by the point. Seconded?
Second.
By Crystal, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And I need a motion to accept an order filed the minutes of the committee on preschool special education for 8/10, 9/20, and 9/27.
Summat.
Moved by Amanda, seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. We also need a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held on October 4th. Moved by Crystal, seconded by Heidi, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Okay, we move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Ward.
Give me one second to get back in here. And we're live. All right, excellent. So sometimes we get wrapped up in our work, right, as a board and as administrators? And it's nice to refocus folks on why we're here and why we sit through some of these meetings and do the work that we do. And that's for the young people that we serve each day. So any opportunity that the board can have to recognize young people that are doing great things from our school district, I like us to take that opportunity. And it's oftentimes the best part of our meeting. So tonight is no exception. We have two outstanding young people present that we want to recognize. And I actually have one person who's not here that we'll recognize for a different reason. But I wanted to start out just letting the board know that I received, along with a few other people from school here, an email from a gentleman named Nathan Johnson from the New York State Special Olympics Organization. And he called out some pretty fantastic accomplishments, as well as participation in Special Olympics by two of our students that, to be honest, I hadn't been aware of or paid attention to. So shame on me for that. So I wanted to make sure that we absolutely, the board got to hear about it and we got to recognize those students tonight. And if they want to say a few things, I watched the video. Video's pretty impressive to watch these young people from our school be in front of a large group of folks talking about their experience and what it meant to them. So when we recognized them, they didn't know I was going to ask them to do this. One of them, their parents told them they were in trouble, that's why they had to come tonight. I did take care of that, that piece of the puzzle. I told them he's as far from being in trouble with me tonight as you can be. So I'm very happy to have these two young people here. So we do have certificates and water bottles. You aren't getting my candy from me tonight. Actually, if you want a piece of candy, take a piece of candy. I would like to have both Derek Call and Bryce Reynolds, if you don't mind coming forward so I could have President Gallen shake your hand and we can get, Mike, can you get some photos? Do you mind grabbing your? All right. Handy, handy. You gonna go around? Yeah, let's go around. So we're from. And I don't know if you guys are watching this, I'd like to congratulate both of you and thank you very much for being here tonight for how you represented us.
Thank you.
This is President Derek Callen, School Board. He's a longtime member of the community, like forever in the community. We want to make sure we recognize you guys. And just if you want to say a few words about your experience, we'd love from that. If you don't feel comfortable doing that tonight, that's okay too. But the floor is yours for a few minutes. And I'll actually grab this mic if you are going to talk.
Want to get your real quick answer?
Yeah, we'll get the pictures. So if you guys mind saying a few words about your experience, so the red light? Means this is on and the floor is yours and we'll step away out of the way. We do record it and we do broadcast it live on our YouTube channel, so this is the real deal.
All right, thank you. Our experience was amazing, just seeing, going there into a whole different environment and how all the athletes and all the coaches and everybody just comes around as one big, huge community. It was amazing. I mean, we watched, me and Bryce went and watched Unified Basketball, which we have here and we play on the team. And just going there and watching and seeing how really competitive they are and how we want it to be here, it's just really amazing. Watch, it's all heavy, it's all heavy.
We are here because, we are here because we have a friend of ours, his name is John Gratto, he passed away and he was one of our hearts and we all got by his soul. So I would love to introduce my mom and dad, Kim and Aaron Reynolds. They participated in Special Olympics Quest softball tournament for me and of course my Derek. But I love you both of you and here's Derek.
Thank you. I will also want to announce, me and Bryce, I'm a coach for the Special Olympics Hudson Falls Diamond Dogs. Bryce is one of our second baseman for the team for softball. We also are competing in the 2022 Fall Games. So that'll be taking place, I think, next weekend, right? Next weekend? So if any of you want to come and cheer us on, we would gladly appreciate it. Thank you.
One more time, right? And another student I wanted to recognize is actually an alumna. As the board is aware, I was away part of the day Friday and then Saturday for Parents' Weekend at St. Lawrence University, along with, I think, did you guys make it up, Allison? Along with Allison. So Gracie Naziver goes there and my daughter Alexis goes there, but I was able to go to a concert and I saw on the program on the back, it says Caroline Martindale, class of 23 for St. Lawrence, from Hudson Falls, New York. And I happened to go to the concert the second night. And in front of me is Tommy Martindale, one of our students here who I had just seen in Homework Club on Thursday, waving to me and his dad waved and I'm like, what's going on here? Because I hadn't seen this yet. But I did want to recognize her. They put on a beautiful performance and not just because my daughter was a part of it and I wanted to recognize her tonight. She's doing well up there. Just, our kids are doing great things here and after they go from here. So I just wanted to put that plug out there for Hudson Falls, recognize some of the young people. And there's countless others, I'm sure, but I had a couple tonight that I wanted to recognize. We thank you so much for what you're doing. We wish you luck on second base. How you do, all right? Any errors or once in a while? No? You got it locked, you got it locked down. Coach, is he telling the truth? We wish you the best of luck. You're certainly welcome to stay for the whole meeting. We also know that you have a lot going on. If you want to go and not stay for the rest of the business, we're not sending you away, do whatever you'd like, but if you want to go, we wish you to have a great night. Thank you for coming, we really appreciate it. Now if he tells you you're in trouble after this, that's on you. Thank you. So I had a few other things. Board members, you'll see at your seat, you have one of these nice little tiger imprinted, I guess clay pots, from the fourth and fifth graders. And I want to thank Mrs. Peace from over at the intermediate school and the students who made these. The tigers are actually made out of students' thumbprints. So they did have a part in this and you've got a few little snacks in there, but it is Board Appreciation Month. Last year, I think there was some pretty nice mugs that were made by the high school art class. This is really cool too, so I hope you'll enjoy it. We'll make sure that the folks that aren't here tonight get theirs. Kelly will take care of that. But I wanted to just let you know that the board is appreciative. A lot of work, a lot of budgets, a lot of hard conversations and decisions to make. You are appreciated and this year it's our fourth and fifth graders that put that together for you. And I hope that's enough calories to get you through the meeting. If not, we'll have to get a bigger bucket next year maybe. So congratulations to you all for the work that you do and it's truly appreciated by the school district. Moving down, capital project. As you saw, we approved the minutes for the special meeting, the bids were approved. Just want to make sure we say that publicly to folks because some people are asking for follow-up information. I did put it out in my Tiger Talk newsletter two weeks ago that we were expecting to award bids and things like that. We're going to have some follow-up information with more details for folks from the community because it's frankly been a long time coming. And the people around this table feel the same way. COVID slowed us down quite a bit and then some overruns on the bid costs slowed us down for four more months and now here we are. So we had a contractor kickoff meeting last Wednesday right here, so all the contractors are onboard, ready to roll. And we got the milestone schedule. We've got some work that's going to begin here at the high school and over at the middle school relatively soon. We're looking as soon as October 24th for some of the entrance additions to start happening. I did meet with both Mr. Bennerfield and Mr. Witty separately last week to say, we're moving forward. Are you ready with your plan to get kids in and out of the building without those entrances? And to reschedule your fire drill or evacuation instructions without having those entrances and exits available to you. So they are, they're putting their plans from here onto paper and they'll be getting those out to families in the near future. So they'll see that information. For the high school, I'll share that we have two entrances that look almost exactly the same. So the entryway will move down to this end in front of the gym, that's what we'll be using. Over at the middle school, it's a little bit trickier, but if you look at the front of our middle school, there's that great big front entrance and then to the right of that, about halfway down that wing, there's a set of double doors. That set of double doors will be used for kids entering in the morning. And the doors at the end by the parking lot will be used for parents' pickup and all that kind of stuff. So that's the Cliff Notes version, it'll come out in writing from the principals, but we're working on. Some other work that's going to start relatively soon will be the bathroom reconstructions here in the high school. There's three sets of bathrooms that are going to be reconstructed, it won't be all of them. But that work is scheduled to start as soon as possible. So that work, we're looking at the end of October. It'll all depend on the lead type of materials. There's no sense in tearing a bathroom apart unless we can start putting it back together. But you'll see that. So we do have enough available bathrooms so we can close, want to still have enough seats per capita to meet the guidelines that are required to have a school in operation. Just so you know, we did ask architects to check that. We are fully in compliance by closing one bathroom at a time and reopening as they're done. That's kind of the quick version of that. Some of the things that people may be asking questions about, it's going to be a little bit later on. Library reconstruction at the high school. The contractors asked if they could get a little bit earlier, then it's not dated on this first schedule. And we're going to try to work with them. We've got to find a place for our library to go. Kevin's been working and Mike's had some input on that. A couple of places to relocate the library here in the high school. Once we get that figured out, if we can give them a library earlier, that means we can have it back earlier. So that's kind of my plan with the project, it always will be. If we can give up a space earlier to get it back earlier and not have it be, there's going to be minor inconveniences and board members and folks are going to hear about minor inconveniences. We're not going to grind education to a halt here, but we've got to find that happy medium. So that's kind of my goal. The other is, the other one that's a big ticket item is the auditorium. That work is slated to start immediately after the December concerts. So we're going to give it to them as quick as we can because I want it back for the start of the school year next year. So those are the big things that are happening. A lot of this other stuff is on here, but it's mostly June work or fitted in where it will fit without causing any kind of disruption, like some break work and things like that. Milestone schedule is subject to change, but that's the Cliff Notes version of it now for everybody on the board. Security camera progress. Day automation is in working as part of the building project. We have a security camera upgrade happening across all buildings there in this building. They were here starting last Tuesday. They have the high school almost completely re-camera it. I'll use that, it's probably not a real word. So we're in good shape there. We did have a couple of add-on ideas after the fact and Kevin spent some time along with Dave, speaking with Carissa from Day Automation about adding some cameras to the path that goes down towards Notre Dame so that we have some capability to capture some video over there. So that'll come in as a change order. And we have to be careful with change orders, you guys heard that at the meeting, because we don't have a lot of available funds left in our project after what was awarded for the bids. But we're going to see what comes back, we believe we can do it. We think it's important to have some eyes and video on that area, although we do have at the end of the day dismissal, one of the security guards that goes down to the end and actually one of the staff members from the middle school walks over to the edge of the middle school property. So we're pretty well covered down to the end, but video is helpful for a lot of reasons. So those will be coming online. Our principals will be getting trained on the new software that comes with it and it's bringing this place into the 21st century for video and security systems. And more to come about that, but that's where we are right now with work happening. And we had the annual Board's Case in Building Tour at 5:30 this evening. We met out in front of the high school. Crystal was able to join us on that, so Dave took, Mr. McKeegan took Crystal and me and Kevin to all the buildings and showed off some of the work that's happened since last year, like the multipurpose classroom, 21st Century Classroom over in the middle school, amongst other things, and other buildings. And also gave a really brief description of the work that's happening during the project that each building. But most of the work that's happening, the showpiece work is here, the other buildings, it's secure entrances is mostly what's happening there. So that's where we are. But I wanted to put that out there and let folks know we did do that. Anybody who wasn't able to make that tonight, if you do want to see one of the buildings, let us know, we can get you scheduled with Dave. But we wanted to make sure we had the walkthrough for compliance purposes checked off this evening. We had to reschedule last month because Dave was not being along. I think that's everything for me for superintendent's report.
Okay.
Oh yeah, thank you. Yep, not going to have the 20th of November. I think that's, I think that's correct. God, there was two runs. There was Operation Santa Claus run and then was there a Luciano run in the fall as well? Both used to happen. But there was a couple of runs that used to happen in the fall. They went away for a few years. Jen French from the Teachers Association approached me last, I think it was last May or June and asked if they could take the lead on that and bring that back to life. So you'll see that on the 20th, there is a run that's going to happen. I believe it's going to end at the middle school, which is traditional for that fall run here in Hudson Falls. I remember my daughter was in it many, many years ago. The same one who's now 18 in college was maybe five finishing that little run over there right in front of the middle school. So thank you for reminding me. There's flyers around the school. Brett, is that posted on our website too? The fun run? So it will be. It will be, yeah. And you can, first 175 registered are guaranteed a T-shirt after that. I guess it depends while supplies last, but please come out and support it. The money is going to Operation Santa Claus and we certainly need a lot of Santa Claus in the world these days. So I hope you're able to support that or at least come out and cheer people on who are in the run. I think it's the 20th.
20?
It's the, it's the weekend prior to the Thanksgiving holiday. And I can send you guys a flyer. We'll have Kelly email it, I have it right in my office.
Okay.
Thank you. I think, I think I am good. Am I good?
Any questions?
We did talk at our board retreat about meeting earlier than seven, for like 15, 20 minutes, just to do like an onboarding for new members. We were going to do it last month, but then it was the walkers, and the walkers handled and then the walkers today. Are we planning on starting that next month? Because we also have pictures next month.
Yep, so we need to have, we aren't done creating the onboarding vote list. So that's still sitting on, sitting with me, waiting on me. So yes, we do need to do that. I won't tell you that, we'll be ready to do it. If it is, I'll get it out there, I just right now don't have it scheduled to be next month. All right. But keep pushing me on it and I haven't forgotten. We'll take it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, that moves us to public comment. Any public comments at all? So moving on to president's report, Mr. Ward's Goldenay Thunder with all of the exciting news for the building project. That was going to be kind of my thing and, you know, but.
I didn't, I didn't look at your report, I apologize.
That's okay, I'll just move on. I mean, perfect.
Very excited, let's put that way.
Super exciting. And I know that Mark and I had talked, Mr. Gallow and I had talked last meeting about putting together something of all of the projects that we have been planning to do for the last several years, right Kevin? I mean, just, and putting this capital project together is really exciting that we're really, it's fruition now, I mean, we're, this is happening. So we're really excited about this. But we will get together, we will figure out like, you know, the sale of Purgoyne Avenue and just like the steps that have happened in the last 10 years or so.
Is that maybe a timeline for maybe next month's meeting?
Yeah, I think we, I think so. I think so, we'll do something like that, just to see how the district has moved forward with some of the building projects. Okay, moving on to committee meetings for personnel. Mr. Kanini is not here this evening.
I can, I can handle it.
So Mr. Ward volunteered to take over personnel.
Yeah, so you got to hear from me a little bit more. So we've got quite a few intermarials on there, that's great. We've got so much going on for our students. I'm so happy that that many people are signing up to do intermarials for our kids because they need it. We've got a couple of folks who you're seeing that were, got his terminations. Those are people who haven't shown up for work since we hired them, so obviously they're not going to be employed here. Few transfers between titles. And you'll see a retro title change for one individual. That was just something that should have been changed last month that was caught after the fact by the supervisor that they had to send us that information. And you'll see a couple resignations and there's one that I wanted to call out and I received a letter from this individual. She is going to be retiring on Friday, April 28, 2023. She has been driving school bus for Hudson Falls Central School for 33 years. And she wrote, and enjoyed doing so. 33 years. So I want to just say thank you on behalf of the district office and I'm sure on behalf of the board to Cheryl K. Jones for 33 years and I hope that her next several months through April 28th are as great as the first few months that she had here and I really thank her for her service. And that's what I have for personnel.
Can I ask a question? And I'm sorry, I got my questions super close to me and that's, I don't know, so then I won't. I was very impressed with how many clubs, after-school clubs we are offering to our students and the wide variety of interests that they are. And I knew what most of those clubs were just from being on board and having kids in the district, but I was wondering if someone could explain to me what Top-notch Tuesday Club is and Wellness Club, just out of interest for me to know what they do.
Do you want to take it, Mike?
Yep, Top-notch Tuesday is, where do you, Ramos, I think? And it's, today they do cooking, another day they're going to build shelters outside, another day they're going to do, it's various activities.
Right.
But it's just get these kids together who might not be connected to some other club.
Love it.
It's great, I think it's, I think it's Mr. Malo and Mrs. Ramos.
Yep. So there's one at the high school. And it also. And PJ has Wellness Wednesdays or TNT Thursdays.
And what is Wellness Wednesdays, is that like nutrition or that's the same kind of thing, just fun stuff for kids to hang out?
Just trying to come up with the acronym.
Love it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for personnel? Moving on to athletics.
Should I approve that by consent first, right?
Oh yeah, by consent, that personnel is approved. Moving on to athletics.
All right, not a lot of feedback regarding fall sports, other than they all seem to be going well. We have winter sports start dates. JV and varsity, it's going to be starting November 14th, modified November 28th. Registration is going to be through the family ID again. This platform seems to be working extremely well for our district, so people are using it and it hasn't shown any issues. Few people did report some problems trying to log in through mobile devices, but that may have been resolved at this point. These registrations will open 30 days prior to the start date. There have been some updates to our consent forms, the Dominic Murray SCA Act, sudden cardiac arrest act. So it's led to some additional questions regarding heart health. Any child with a former history or family history will require additional clearances from their medical professionals before being allowed to play. There's some changes to return to play protocols. Dan, on the COVID ones, the COVID, was it a positive test?
And so if you're COVID positive, you come back and it's a three-day, it's one day of about 50% activity, one day of pulling. day of about 50% activity, one day of full activity, and then you can participate fully in a game or contest on day three.
Okay.
And that's if you have symptoms resolving and you didn't have severe COVID. If you have severe COVID, it requires more interaction with your doctor to get back in.
Okay. There's also concussion protocol changes. It sounds like we're going to be having providers coming into the school a couple of days a week to help speed that process along. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan.
Trying, trying to, yes. Yeah. And the provider you're talking about is for the folks who are trying to return to play for PE classes. With, with athletics, with athletes, there's practice almost every day, right?
Right.
There's, they go just six days in a row, but almost every day. When a student's out with a concussion or because of COVID or whatever reason, they're going to return to play. They only have PE once every four days and they have to get through three different partial to full exertion activities. That could take them two weeks depending on how that falls. So what we have is a physical, a certified physical education teacher who's here doing makeup PE courses before school for students who want to get back into PE without having to wait for their normal PE classes to happen. So that's, that's what you were referring to, I believe.
Yes. Yep. Some news in the Foothills Council. Johnstown is exploring options of potentially leaving the Foothills Council. They would like to stay in two sports, field hockey and lacrosse. It sounds like that's going to be determined by a future meeting of athletic directors in the league. So more to come on that as we know more, unless there's been more coming out since
Nothing, nothing new. I think the Johnstown Board is having a conversation as well.
Yep.
About what they think they want, what they want to do at this point.
Yep. There's going to be some work, well, exploration at the middle school of the fitness room. We're going to be reviewing some equipment over there, seeing if it still meets the needs and is still serviceable. From there, they're going to try taking the current fitness room. There's some additional need for PE classes, for additional options, different classes and structures. So that room's probably going to be reused in a different way for PE classes. And any of the equipment that's not serviceable for us could go to a surplus. And then Dan took my fun run statement.
You made me.
You said you wanted it.
Good enough.
I do have just a clarification on the return to play. So if, if someone has, I mean, I'll say regular COVID instead of severe COVID, they don't have to go to their doctor? They just have that three day wait period?
No, their doctor has to say yes.
They do have to go to their pediatrician?
Their doctor has to say yes first. Correct. Yeah, sorry. I wasn't even that on purpose.
I know. I just wanted to make sure.
You're actually right. That's a huge difference. That's a huge difference. You're right.
Any other questions? Okay. So that moves us to the audit committee. Mrs. Grimaldi.
So kind of a busy, busy month in audit. We didn't get the audit finalized and backed. So there, we're kind of can't catch up on a lot of treasures reports. We do have three approved this month. So just I'll start with those. For June, there was 20, the receipts in the general fund and 9.6 in dispersments, a little higher than normal, normal for June. But it jumped higher in June because there's a, a, an interest in the, that's about that month as well, that extra payroll check. So that leaves a balance of 2.1 in the general fund and a total cash on hand of 6.3. For the live treasure support, 860,000 in receipts in the general fund and 2.5 in dispersments, leaving a balance in the general fund of 47,000 dollars and a total cash on hand of 5.1 million dollars. And then lastly, August treasures report, the general fund 2.4 million in receipts and 2.5 in dispersments, a balance of 322,000. Again, that's kind of a lower checking account balance typically in August because we're, sometimes we get, we get the taxes in, carbon taxes and big state DPO as well as a lot. And so that we're in good shape now, but that's going to be settled there. And then total cash on hand of 4.1 million. Any questions on the new treasury report? For the ECA balances from August, so there wasn't a lot of activity there. It was one of the summer months, girls' basketball did kind of similar to how boys have in July, or we saw the activity in July. They also hosted summer league. So that's another great opportunity for players to kind of other schools. So that was very significant there. And also the girls' cheerleaders had a fundraiser and a lot of Japanese as well. So just a little bit of that there. Yeah, sure. There are accounts, there's kind of some restructuring there. Have any one speak to that?
Yep. Basically, what we're looking to do is have some new extracurricular accounts approved. And there's some, there's some other ones that are being restructured, would be a great way to say it. Basically, we have a new team in the middle school. So as you can see on the, on your chart there, the team seven, eight is going to dissolve and it's going to split funds between Esvego and Geneseo. There'll be a new team seven, new team eight. Those are brand new teams that we do not have extracurricular accounts for. We're also renaming the athletic association. It will become football. In team six, we, again, those, those are going to be reclassifications. So we're basically redoing that whole group in the middle school. So they all have individual accounts rather than have joint accounts for fundraising. So they'll kind of stay within their own teams. But in order to do that, we have to actually approve those accounts to be, to be approved.
There is a resolution there. Do we want to, do you want to move on to the resolution to last?
Let's do that one while we're there, if you don't mind.
Okay. So be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the creation and changes to the ECA accounts listed below, which were as Mr. Ponte just described. We have a motion seconded by, Mike, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. Want to do the treasury report real quick, do you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
We've got a few, we've got the audit, we've got a few more. So we'll go, want to go on to the audit and we'll stay in order.
Okay. We just need a motion to accept the treasury report for June and August?
June, July.
June, July and August. Do we have a motion on all three? Okay, seconded by Amanda. All in favor? Opposed? That carries.
And I think I will let Mr. Ponte also go over the audit.
We, last week we received a copy of our external audit. Again, each, each year the school district has to have an external audit. They passed out a copy to you. It's that blue folder in front of you. And basically what's going to occur tonight is the Board of Education is going to do a resolution approving receipt of the audit. That's, that's what it is. That, that you actually receive the audit, not necessarily whether you agree or disagree with what's in the audit, but that you are receiving the audit. The audit was conducted by Jacob Beacher Bethel. It started at the end of July and there were different times when he came back throughout the, throughout the course of the summer. The, one of the things that took a little bit longer was with the additional funding that we were receiving from the federal government creates havoc accounting wise throughout your, your budgets and, and what's called the special aid fund. So we, lining that up was, was difficult with the audit. It's, it needed to flow through the auditor this year. So after we got that all lined up, we did receive a copy of the audit. Within the audit, if you're ever one of, when you look at the audit, you want to look at the last couple pages, those are the findings for the district. And basically, we had three findings that we, oh, two findings that we, that we needed to address. Number one was we were over 4% fund balance cap. And number two was within our cafeteria fund, we were running a negative fund balance within our cafeteria fund. That was strictly because of, that, that displaced during COVID. When we were feeding everybody and not getting any federal reimbursement money back in, we ran into, into the negative. However, this year, the cafeteria, what I did, cafeteria actually did make a profit. So it is back to where, it's coming back to where it should be. But what we need to do is offset that. So we have, we need to do a corrective action plan. We discussed the corrective action plan with the audit committee on, on those two items. So what we're, what we're proposing, as you can see, we're proposing that the district use the additional fund balance to offset the losses in the cafeteria from the CBT. Also to finish funding capital reserve account which we created last year. We created that reserve with $250,000 cap. We put 100 in it. So we're looking to put another 150 in to get up to that cap. And then also we'll use that additional funding above and beyond from the general fund to offset health insurance costs. We're going to start seeing health insurance costs, cost rise much higher than they have in the past few years because again, the health insurance has been used a lot more widely now with, with different procedures and the usage is going up. So we're starting to see that trend back up. So, so we would just need, if the, or there's any questions on those things, please, please ask. And if not, we would just need to approve that as we send that into the state by Friday.
All right. So the first resolution, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District accepts the external audit done by Beacher Bethel LLP.
So moved.
Seconded by?
Second.
Heidi, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And lastly, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District accepts the corrective action plan regarding the findings of the external audit, audit done by Beacher Bethel. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mike, seconded by?
Seconded.
Crystal, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Anything else for audit?
We, we have one item that kind of crosses over between athletics and audit committee.
Okay.
So we wanted to have a short conversation with the board. You heard Mike talk about some of the equipment that is no longer serviceable and also requests that were made by the PE department to use that a little bit differently than it has been in the past. So some of those requests were made last year about this time. And my response was, let's hold on for about one year to see what this really looks like when we get school back open and running again. The last thing we want to do is surplus equipment and then find out that that's the one piece of equipment that somebody wanted for some reason. So Ryan Carpenter's been working on that with the PE folks. They're at a point now where we do have a considerable list of, of items to surplus. So at, at some point, we need to surplus those items so they can use that space for what they need it for, for physical education classes. Previously, that space was used, I guess, for adult, adults to commit and use in the evenings. He, Ryan is work, Mr. Carpenter is working on a schedule for the fitness center here at the high school to be used. We're looking for that middle school one to be used for our students because we have added an extra team, makes some of the PE classes a little bit larger. So we need more space for our PE classes. So we're looking to do more dynamic type fitness activities. I think that's the right word, where you're flipping stuff and body weight and all that, not, not treadmills and things like that. And maybe some of us remember from our days in the gym and we, that was quite some time ago. But that conversation needs to be had by the board.
The old jokes.
Sorry. I, I make, I make a lot of grunting noises when I stand up. My wife has me climbing some mountains. But, but it makes sense now that we spent some time to really look at it. I was hesitant last year. I think we've got a plan so we can get the community access back to the, the center over here once the schedule comes out. And it was said very well at the committee, the, the space is for the kids first. I think that's what Mark and a few other people said, it's got to be for the kids first. And if we've got another place for the adults, then we'll figure that out. So that's, that's where we are. So I don't think, we didn't have a surplus list in this. The piece that I was, wanted to ask about was, should that be for disposal or for sale or disposal? Sale if possible and if not, for disposal. Because there's some items that maybe could be sold. And that was a conversation we had there. So I just curious what the board might want to do as a whole. Before we bring it to you for a vote, and around the table, people are like, what do you mean? We're just going to throw this stuff away? Is there some value to it? Because there may be some value to somebody, to some of this, but it certainly is not all of value.
Is there a middle step? Like sell it and then if nobody will buy it, try to donate it somewhere? I don't know if there is a place to donate it rather than dispose of it. Like, is there a middle step?
I don't know. But we can, we can see. I mean, are you aware of one where it takes, there might be somebody who would take a donation of that.
Like a boys and girls club or something like that? I don't know, something like that is what I was thinking.
The one thing we have to, the one thing we have to check on that is, is how the liability goes with that.
Yeah.
When you make that donation. So that's, that's what kind of like, we're at the point, that's one of the things we discussed in there is, because actually they're about the stuff, a lot of stuff has to be taken apart. Well, the, the door was put together in there and it's going to be taken apart. Very big pieces of equipment. So when you start getting individuals, that could be a problem versus a club or something like that. So we'll have, just have to follow up with the insurance agent to see exactly what that, what that liability is with doing something like that. In case somebody gets thrown in it in the future or something.
So what we'll do is we'll get a list so you folks, so you can see it on the next agenda. So you can see what it is. We'll have a motion on there. We'll do it for sale, donate, dispose. We'll do something like that. We'll put the three steps in there and then we'll see how, we'll see how it shakes out. We'll try to do it in that order. If that pleases the board anyways.
Sounds good. Yeah.
Okay.
Is the liability going to be different on each piece?
We'll have to find out. We'll have to find out. We just don't want to donate it right now.
Depending on what it is?
Probably. You, I mean, if you go sale, donate, dispose?
Yeah.
Dispose is the lowest.
Well, yeah.
You know, you're, you're basically taking the pieces and it's crap. It's crap value for that versus donating versus, you know, there usually be companies years ago that would come in and buy. I don't know if they're around anymore. I'm talking 20 years ago. So I don't know if they're still around or not. But those are different things to do.
Questions about that?
The only other thing, Mr. Ward, on audit that you briefly mentioned to us was the Chippy or the Champlain Hudson Power Express is, we're looking at about a year back, like delay on that from what you had heard?
Yeah. So the most recent, is it, is it 25, 26 now?
Yes.
They're, they're projecting a 25, 26 transmission date, which means that those funds, those funds don't flow until the electricity flows.
Right.
So they're, they're a little bit behind. We'll see if they, maybe they'll catch up. Maybe they won't. What's good is we haven't committed those funds, but we have certainly talked about committing those funds to our next couple of building projects and audit and buildings and grounds, those two committees combined. So, so more to come.
Yep. I think that's all I had.
Anybody else have any other questions for audit?
The monthly warrants are also in the board docs if anyone has questions.
Okay. Okay. We move on to transportation. Dr. Steele?
All right. Read the DOT report there and the trip report. Biggest issue remains our driver shortage. We continue to be low, but we're back from some of the drivers. We still are truly hiring mechanics who drive as well as who take the buses. So apparently getting the buses out and around is reasonably timed. We're still trying to recruit people to work and train people to work. And we've got a couple leads here and there, some more promising than others from what I understand, but it's still a work in progress as it is for most districts. We did have one retirement that we talked about earlier and we had a driver come back. So there's no loss there to our manpower anyways. We did have a bus accident on September 12th. One of our buses hit a bridge on County Route 43. You can read the details on that right there. And there's a brief follow-up on an incident we talked about in September. A little bit there on that as well. But everything else is pretty, pretty usual outside of, we're still trying to kind of drive as you drive our buses. So you can see the diesel, gasoline, propane prices are as usual as well.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Dr. Steele? Okay. We move forward to building and grounds.
Yeah, I can, I can run through that. We, we spent some time overviewing the financials on the capital project and actually the full board received the information, the special board meeting with all of that there. I talked about a couple of meetings, provided some brief updates on meeting with Schoolhouse and Danforth. Schoolhouse is our construction management firm and Danforth is the folks we chose to do the detailed energy audit for a possible EPC. Just trying to make sure that everybody stays on task and that we're moving forward. And right now, I, I feel really good about where we are with, with Schoolhouse and the contractors. And Danforth actually was here today, I think, to meet with Dave as part of the energy audit. So that's progressing. So that's progressing along that 90-day timeframe that I provided to you guys in my update. Initially, you heard some, some talk about trying to do 45 or 60. And in the end, it's, we want, when the numbers come, we want them to be the numbers, not, this is as good as we could do in 45 days. We need the real numbers because we're, we're dealing with a fixed number of dollars and very close budgets when we bid this stuff out. And, and one thing to know is that the boilers are becoming a barrier. And I know you guys can read that there. We talked about them being included in the project. Publicly, I want to make sure everybody knows they're not included in the building project at this point. Those bids we awarded last week do not include the boiler replacement. The good news is that Mr. McKeegan has said those will last, that's another half a dozen years if need be. Obviously, it means there's, there's that upkeep component that new ones don't have. But he goes, we're perfectly fine to go forward until we have our next phase or next project to get that work done. Matter of fact, it was brought up, well, maybe we could take the generator out of the budget that's supposed to go on over at Margaret Murphy and put that money towards the boilers, but maybe if things come in lower. And in the end, Dave said, nope, the generator has to be a priority over those boilers anyways. And then magically, like two days later, we had to close Margaret Murphy because the power company was shutting the power off on short notice for us. And we have no way to generate electricity over there. So Dave's words could not have been made true more quickly than, than that experience for us. And, and I just want to say publicly, thank you to the parents and staff and the students for being very flexible on that short notice. There was really nothing that we could do about it. There was nothing that we did. And, and we were just kind of stuck in the middle. But a year from now, we should be able to just turn the power if you want, and the, and the generator will start up and we'll, we'll be running over there at Margaret Murphy. So just wanted to put that out there. Auditorium, we, the seat swatches have been reviewed and chosen. I think I talked about that at the bid meeting, so I don't want to repeat everything I said at the bid meeting.
Can I ask you a question before we do the survey?
Yep.
What is the problem with the boilers? The cost for the supply chain?
It's the cost. They won't fit into our construction budget. So we would have to, in order to get the boilers to fit, you have to look at one of your big projects to go away. So really, you'd be looking at the high school library or the auditorium.
Has the cost gone up over COVID or?
So the cost has gone up since you initially had the project estimated, which would have been even before I started here, was when you guys first had this estimated. So we went to bid, we opened those bids. That was April, I think. We opened the original bids. They came in a couple million dollars high. Then we went out and hired an estimating firm that worked with Schoolhouse to restructure the project. Went out for the next set of bids, pulled a bunch of stuff out of the initial project to make it happen. And like I said, we're, I think we have, what, about 65 or 67,000 dollars in available construction budget after we awarded those bids. So that's close on a 16.77 million project. Closer than I, closer than, we don't want to get any closer than that. Let me say it that way. Everything else has been covered on there except for we need to start talking about Phase Two to capture some of the work that we had to push out of this phase as well as other things that were talked about for Phase Two. Way back when the first project was, was bid, I think there was some talk about a couple of Keystone projects along with other maintenance type items. And now the boilers have to be factored into that. So that sets you back a million bucks on what you thought you were going to do with the other work. So, but we'd like to get that out for referendum, really by December of next year or sooner. So a lot of work to be done. Steve is aware that we're looking to go at that pace because we have to go to the voters again. The other thing that's not on that list, but each year a school can do up to $100,000 project without voter approval. That's aided back and you're building an aid ratio. As you heard Kevin say, we've got a fund balance there. It makes good fiscal sense to be doing $100,000 in work every year. What's our building aid ratio? 88%. We'll get 88,000 of that $100,000 back. So you can't do a lot for $100,000 these days. And that's, that's crazy to hear come out of my mouth, but you can't. But if we do $100,000 every year, you're knocking down those little things. And that means when you get ready to do big projects, some of those little things are taken care of. And you're just taking that same 88,000 you're getting back and putting 12,000 with it and going forward and waiting for that money to come back. So it, it funds itself after you put the money in the first time. So you'll hear more about that as it comes along. And Steve and I had a conversation about that list. And I asked him for a list of $100,000 projects. And I think you said the last one that was done here was the stage, repurposing of the stage in the auditorium, the surface of the stage. So that's building some grounds in a nutshell.
Any questions? Okay. That moves us to Policy. Mrs. Lethem?
Okay. You will see that we have nothing new for first reads in your Board docs. All we have are some second reads. So for approval, there's policy 7540 in regards to suicide. There is policy 1510 in regards to regular board meetings and rules. And then we have 6551, the FMLA. Does anyone have any questions on any of those? Okay. That's it.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion on?
Yep. Once you get to the discussion, I want to say one thing. I promise it's great.
Okay. So you heard the recommendations. Make a motion to approve the Suicide 7540 policy. Do we have a motion? Or you can do them all together, as well as the Regular Board Meeting and Rules 1510 and the 6551 Family and Medical Leave Act. Do we have a motion to approve? Seconded by?
Second.
By Mike. All in favor?
Yes, all in discussion. So 6551 will go into effect upon receipt of signed MOAs from all bargaining units. All the other ones will go into effect immediately. And have Policy Committee, we did talk about it. I was trying to get those off. Being away for Parents Weekend was a priority for me, so I did not get to all the bargaining units from the time we met Wednesday to the time I left on Friday. So that shouldn't take long. But I just want to make sure the Board knows that that is part of that motion. That one takes effect. That's in writing on there once I get the MOAs.
Okay. So by Heidi, motion, seconded by Amanda.
Mike.
By Mike.
Crystal.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Okay. That brings us to Advocacy and Mrs. Andrew Boggs.
Okay. So next Monday, the 17th, is going to be a super busy day for Advocacy Committee. We have a committee meeting at 1:00 and then at 4 o'clock, the NISBA voting delegate virtual meeting is going to go on. And I believe Kelly forwarded to everybody on the Board the delegate guide that just basically tells all of the different proposals that are being put up for vote. And the deadline recently, like just passed to get in the late ones. And there's no guarantee that those will get voted on because they were put in the board. But if everyone had the timing function, they, they did not get voted on last year. But they might this year. So if anybody has a question on the delegate guide, just reach out to me and I'm happy to chat with you about that. There is going to be on Tuesday, the 18th, at 3 o'clock, some school districts advocacy liaisons are meeting virtually. The Chuck Schumer is about to close down. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And the last thing I have for you is that Dan is on the Vote These Superintendent Advocacy Committee. And do you have anything to report to us? You guys were going to put together your directives for this, this year?
Yeah. So we have had a second meeting. We had the first meeting where we talked about those priorities. So you'll see those priorities come back to the Board every, every year. I'm sure you've seen those every year. Where they come, we vote, we do a resolution to accept them and send a letter to our legislators. A couple of items. There's a Save the Day for the Legislative Breakfast. Jeff said he was able to attend that this year. And there was one other thing. New York State School Boards, I realize it's not necessarily an advocacy event. But our chorus will be presenting at the NISBA Dinner. And maybe you, I don't want to steal your thunder, but I just.
No, I totally forgot that.
So did the RCP already go out or not yet, Kelly? We haven't seen it yet. So when that one comes out, please let Kelly know if you want to go. There is a cost. I mean, it's, it's, it's a cost for dinner to go. I'm, I'm really excited to have our, our students there representing Hudson Falls at that dinner. So, and that night, it's, the topic is board superintendent, relationships, and, and that type of material. So feel free to let Kelly know when the time comes. It's a good dinner. It's good networking. It's good, it's good content. And our kids will be there performing.
And we made a commitment to do professional development twice a year at each member of the group. So it's pretty great to have that checked on, checked that off.
And we'll come back. Heidi and I are, do you want to talk about, Lon, should you talk about that?
I don't really know what to expect. The NISBA conference is coming up, the New York State Conference in Syracuse. Not this coming, we've been living two weekends.
The 28th, the last weekend of March.
Yep. And so we're signed up and ready to go. And they have all of the different meetings posted and the topics. And it looks great. I'm really excited to go and learn new stuff and bring it back.
Yeah, we'll have a lot, we'll have a lot to share by the time November comes around.
And there was a lot on advocacy, which I was happy to see. So I'm pumped, I'm excited.
That's what I had to offer.
Is there like a section of the next board meeting? Will it be in your advocacy thing or your superintendent's report probably? Were you kind of?
So, Nick, we're going to, we're going to talk about how we're going to do it. So I've seen it done, I've done it a couple of different ways where we've come back. And Board members who want to have presented back to the full board either at a meeting or in a committee meeting. So we'll talk after, after we get through it about the best way to share. Maybe, maybe even we share a list of what we went to and see what people want to hear about.
Yep.
And then spend 10 or 15 minutes doing a presentation. Either, November meeting might be quick to turn it around after being out there. So maybe December. Or we'll pick a meeting because I think December is tenure reviews, which we know is a little bit longer of a meeting than they think is. We'll pick a time. But the, the goal is to come back and turnkey some of that. But, but I think we're each going to hit probably 15 or so sessions over the, the two and a half days. If you ever get a chance next year, if you're able to come at the time, I don't know where it's going to be. It might rotate back to New York City again or Buffalo, Rochester. It's worth it as a board. I, I found it worthwhile to take board members there. Most years in forever when I was there.
Any questions for Heidi? Do we have one for the session?
I do not.
Okay. Well, one hour later, I make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded by? Seconded by Crystal. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you very much for attending.